Starting with 100, right?
Before we get started, the parking committee would like to have a second public meeting. And they would like to schedule that on June 24th. June 24th is currently scheduled as a code update meeting. But I would recommend that we do the second public meeting for the parking committee as a higher priority than the code update meeting. Is that okay with everybody?
Sure, absolutely.
Works for me.
Okay, I'll let Jeff know and we'll put out the ads.
So a 6:30 start time again, or 7?
Seven o'clock.
Okay.
So a public meeting similar to the one we had before?
Yes, and the expectation is there will be updated proposals.
Okay.
That's it for me.
That's it, we can go now.
Okay, good night.
Good night. I wish.
So, let's see if we can nail this tonight.
Yeah.
Please.
Yes.
Chapter 100.
We're gonna change our minds and change stuff every day. Just the way it is.
Okay.
Start scrolling down from the top, there's a bunch of different comments, so let's work through them and quickly and
Okay.
come up with some agreements and some definites. Go ahead Fran.
Works for me. Okay, well, first one is page two. 100-1B, regulate and minimize, we're adding, instead of just impacts, quality of life impacts such as parking, noise, trash, et cetera, et cetera. Is everyone okay with those changes?
Good.
Good. Good, whoops. Let's see if I can not. Sorry, guys.
I just gotta get smaller.
The screen jumped.
Your faces and the code. It drives me crazy to look at the screen and not see who's talking at the same time.
Yeah, I gotta side to each other. Okay, I'm down in the section E. Sure, Tim, okay, wait a minute, just before that. D, the last sentence, special regulation of these uses is necessary to ensure that they will be compatible with surrounding residential uses and will not, we're taking out act to harm, will not harm and/or alter the neighborhoods they are located within. Are we okay with that?
Yeah.
Fine.
Tweets, are you seeing, are you seeing these now?
I am seeing them, thank you.
Okay, E, section E.
Sorry, sorry Anne, back up, back up to D, you've got the slash.
Gotcha. Got it. And/or alter the neighborhoods, we're good?
Yeah.
Okay, E. Let me see here, okay. Short-term rentals have the potential of removing full-time residential housing from the housing market, driving up market rates and creating affordable housing shortages. Limiting short-term rentals will safeguard, preserve, and protect residential housing stock in the village. And so the, the part from the housing market, driving up market rates, that's been added, and I think the suggestion is taking out, which can minimize the number of full-time residents affecting the number of volunteers, et cetera, et cetera. Couple of things in the addition, my comment was that I didn't think, we can definitely say that short-term rentals will drive up market rates, and I didn't think that we could characterize housing in Cold Spring as affordable. Where we're saying it's gonna, it will create affordable housing shortages. It may create housing, you know, housing rental shortages or something similar, but I wasn't necessarily sure about affordable.
I was thinking in particular, we're not saying that Cold Spring is affordable. We're saying it can reduce affordable housing, and I was thinking particularly of that really helpful document that the Duchess County Planning Department prepared, which had a strong bibliography on the impact of short-term rentals on affordable housing.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not married to it.
It seems more defensible to me in terms of having been documented in articles about short-term rentals and some data, as opposed to the number of volunteers. I do agree absolutely in principle. I share the concern about number of volunteers, potential number for volunteers being impacted, but that seemed like we were on sort of speculative ground that way, and it's
Sorry, so, so back up. I agree that affordable housing does not exist in the village, so creating affordable housing shortages. The word affordable there.
They got affordable?
Yeah.
Okay. Does that work? Creating housing shortages?
It's also the potential, so remember that.
Right.
Right, potential of removing full-time residential housing from the housing market, driving up market rates and creating housing shortages. Is it good if we take out affordable?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
There isn't much, Marie's right.
Are we, are we eliminating the part in yellow?
I don't.
Or are we leaving that in? Minimize.
So, so it seems to me that limiting short-term rentals will preserve, will safeguard, preserve, and protect residential housing stock in the village of Cold Spring, period.
Right.
That, that is reinforcing the first sentence. The, the next is, is a fact. Short-term rentals have the potential to minimize the number of full-time residents, affect, which affects the number of volunteers, et cetera, so.
If you frame it as a potential, as Dave just said, that it seems more defensible.
Okay.
I would, I would make it a separate, separate bullet.
Okay.
And then, yes, same as the above wording. Beautiful.
It feels like it's coming together at this point.
As a potential to, not all, to minimize?
To minimize.
Minimize the number of full-time residents affecting, how does that sound?
Yeah.
I think it was good.
Two space. All right, let me, that goes like that.
When we get down to H and I, I just looked at this a while ago, I, I don't even think they should even belong there.
Okay.
And under?
We're on her. This, this is under the section for purpose, I don't think minimum distance and is, that should be in the regulations, I think.
Yes.
Limit of five.
Okay, so, do we need to move this someplace, or is it someplace else that we don't need to move it?
We, I think we need to move it, but we can scroll down and come back to it, but.
Okay, so let me just.
Regulations.
We just put a note 100.1 each.
So, so 100-3A says no, no more than 34 registered STRs, i.e. 5% of the total R1, I1, and B1 properties, which is 655, at the adoption of this local law, shall be allowed at any one time throughout the village. So, one of them, I think, is already covered.
Okay.
So I can take out the 5% one?
Yes. And the minimum distance should be in the regulations. I, I agree, and I don't think, I don't think we have that in the regulations.
There is reference to it somewhere, because earlier I, I, or later in the document, I asked, do we mean linear or radial? Because that wasn't clear, isn't clear to me in the later section. And Dave, Dave commented about Jason.
Can you find it, Kathleen?
Sure, Dave, just a little bit ago, Dave commented on it too. Oh, here, so. Oh, no, it's actually in that, it's in that, it's there. I'm asking, so the 300 feet is a radial measure or a linear measure?
Measure. Okay, so the answer to that is, a radial measure is a, is a linear measure. They're the same thing.
Meaning, radial meaning around?
No, that's not what radial means, it means radius.
Yeah.
So, so is what you're trying to get at 300 feet in a straight line or 300 feet around?
As I said, a radial measure is the same as a linear measure, it is a straight line measure.
I'm asking you what your goal is, is your goal to have?
Linear, linear, straight line, straight line.
Okay, so then.
That is also radial.
Let me find Dave's. Dave, where, where did you earlier today say something about adjoining in relation to the same?
That, it was in H, and that what we're just talking about, I believe, or I, whatever, where are we?
In that spread? I don't see it anymore.
I put it back up, I took it down, I put it back up.
So Dave, does that address what you were wanting to address in terms of adjoining and abutting? If it's linear alone?
Well, no, because it says in any direction, and I don't think, should be like in, in the rear of someone's going in that direction. I think it should be on the same street, linear, like, if you're on, on, you know, if you're on Parrot Street and you have a house three, on either side of the street, and this has been a problem, wording this from day one.
Yeah.
It's like, which, you know, it's 300 feet in any direction. And a budding and adjoining properties, not 300 feet in the rear, which can go two properties down or maybe across the street. I think it should just be on that street and budding and adjoining, so that one person isn't surrounded by short-term rentals.
So in doing those two pieces together, you address side to side and rear?
Okay, so we want, so I'm back to 100-1, it's now I, but we need to move it, but let's word it, a minimum distance of 300 linear feet between permitted short-term rentals, so take out in any direction?
If, if, I think so, but does that, is that fine, 300 linear feet?
No, 300.
That makes it clearer, because that, when you say in any direction, is the line going front to back or side to side?
No.
300 linear feet?
It's a radius.
And then a budding.
It's a radius.
In any direction is, is, is radial.
Right.
Okay, that's what, that's what I'm trying to say, are we repeating ourselves then by adding adjoining or budding? I'm not sure what, what, what you're trying to accomplish. I know what Dave's trying to accomplish, I'm not sure what Marie's advocating for.
I'm not advocating for anything, I'm just saying, well, this is what it means.
A minimum distance of 300 linear feet between permitted short-term rentals, rentals.
If you just say 300 linear feet, then that could be 300 linear feet. A linear foot can be behind also, can it?
Yes, yes it can.
Yeah.
And a regulation presenting.
That's the same as radial.
So then take out, take out adjoining or abutting?
Well, we, I don't want 300 feet going in the back or in a diagonal, or, you know.
But when you say abutting, I think you mean abutting rear to rear? Because that's touching, the property lines are budding.
Abutting, so in my house.
Say that again?
Yeah, or, yeah. In my house, or in everyone's house, you have a property, not everyone's, I'm sure. You have a property behind you, which is, is that a budding, adjoining, whatever the word is? And then you have one that could be on the corner, just budding, and that's also another one. So I have like, right now, I have, you know, one, two, three, possibly four, that could be budding, or.
So you, you want it to say a budding, you want a budding to remain, right?
I want, I want the surrounding, one surrounding property to be off limits, and then on the street, 300 linear feet, but I don't know how you accomplish that.
Minimum distance, let me see, what are we talking about here? Purpose of this article is to.
You want to just cut and paste and throw it down regulations and keep going?
That's a good idea. You could say, when we get there, you could say as well as, potentially, as a solve.
Okay, regulations or a number to, to, to. Compliance.
Regulations is 100.7.
I'm just gonna put it at the end of 100.7 for now.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
And we will figure it out when we get there.
Revisit shortly.
It's amazing how such a simple concept is so complicated.
When you read it, it gets a little nuts, okay, let's go back to where we are. Right, that comes out, be any direction, minimum distance of 300 feet.
I don't know if it's of any use, but I actually understood that.
Well, that's the best test, because you're the, you're the one of us who's looked at it the least.
Yeah, I understood it, literally, if I were to turn around in 300 degrees, or 300 feet, I would, that would be the radius at which we were speaking. And that would include a property that was abutting, my property.
That, I mean.
See, but the thing is, yes, that's all very clear, but if that's not what you want, then it's not the right wording. I, I don't think, I think, yes, it would include properties behind you, but it could also include, in Fran's instance, the house behind her, across the street, and the next house on the next street, that would be 300 feet.
Because that's the, right, that's because.
I'm living on, I'm living on High Street, I have 100 feet of property from the curb to the back. My neighbor behind me has another 100 feet of property, and then across the street, you cross, what street is that behind me? Church, Church Street, and so it would eliminate Mr.,
Heffernan.
What's his name? Heffernan, and his whole property, so that's not really what we wanted.
Ah, I see, okay.
It made sense, it was understandable, it's just maybe not what we wanted.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I get it.
Okay.
Because of, because in some areas, street to street is so dense.
Right.
That's the concern.
No, it's, it's not dense.
It's, it's too far.
It's not the density.
Well.
Do we want a semicircle? Do we want a semicircle? All right, let's move on and when we.
Come on!
Yes. Please.
Okay.
I didn't understand.
That works. Definitions, a definition of residence, the place where one lives, only one short-term rental will be allowed in a residence. And Kathleen's questioning how this works with an apartment building.
So in an apartment building, you have multiple residences, you can only have one short-term unit in that structure.
So I'm wondering if we need to be clear that that's what we mean, I, I see the eye roll, but, but it is confusing. It is confusing for someone, it could be confusing for someone who lives in apartment building and says, well, this unit is my residence. Right? The apartment across the street is, or the apartment across the hall is a different residence.
I, I had a question when I looked at this too, which is gonna, don't throw things at me. Do we need to define the difference between an apartment building and a multifamily house?
That's what I'm asking, yeah.
For example, an apartment building, say over, over the hardware store, there were apartments, I would consider that an apartment building of some sort or other.
Yeah.
And then Phil Heffernan's is like a multifamily house, it's not an apartment building. Is there a difference in how are we gonna, now, I know, I liked what you guys did with the parking committee, you went by water meters. So each water meter defines a residence. Or something to that effect.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know, do we need to differentiate?
Is, the goal is to limit to one per building, one per multifamily building, is that the goal?
I would not say multifamily building, because that is defined elsewhere. Not in this chapter, but in the zoning chapter. Residence is the place where one lives, period. A short-term rental unit is where we want to differentiate.
Okay.
If we want to differentiate.
Residence from the short-term rental unit may be the entire residence, or maybe specific.
Need something?
Okay.
So, to that, I think we would add multiple, let's see, how would we phrase this?
I don't know if this will help, but I just got this from a friend today from Nantucket, who's just, I think there's this.
Oh, I read about that, yeah, they were disaster down there.
Yeah, but one of theirs is, they broke it down, the short-term rental, well, anyway, they broke it down to the short-term rentals and non-short-term rentals, but we can skip over that. It says, "A short-term rental operator shall offer to only one party of short-term renters at a time, no rented, not rented, as separate bedrooms, beds, or spaces to separate parties." So are we trying to, if it's one building, I don't think, I think we're trying to limit it so that you're not renting out, you can only rent out one, right?
Or, or, yes, yes, so a short-term rental unit, the residence used for, the rent, the residence rented for use, and that should be a lowercase r throughout here. A short-term rental unit may be the entire residence, or it may be specific bedrooms in the residence. And then I think we would say is, if a building, I'm, I'm, oops, I'm editing Fran, sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead, go.
No.
I'll stop.
No, 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 I need to go into suggesting, if a building contains multiple.
There we go.
Residences. Only one residence will be permitted, shall be permitted. Only one residence in the building shall be to obtain a short-term rental permit.
Marie just nailed it.
So, so the buildings on Main Street? Um. You know, the apartment buildings on Main Street, none of those can be really offered, right?
Well, if, if, if you take the paint store as, as a structure, there are three apartments in the paint store, above the paint store. Only one of those can be, shall be permitted to obtain a short-term rental permit.
So that would.
I don't, or operated, or.
But that's not all, yeah, that's not all operated.
Every residence, so you're not gonna be having one.
Okay, so, I, I think you want to make a change to this? What, what do you want it to say instead?
No, I think, I think it says fine. I think it's fine, I was just trying to get my head around the whole thing. In terms of the apartments on Main Street, if they're not owner, no, you know, we don't consider renters, and other than, other than the paint store, say, you know, I'm just thinking of where my friend lived next to Catherine's.
Yes.
Of those apartments in that building, they're not really owner occupied, because they're all rented, so they're renter occupied.
They could be renter, sorry, they would be owner occu, they could be owner occupied, but yet get a short-term rental permit. So the owner, the renter of the apartment could vacate the apartment for a weekend and rent it out. Or if the residence had a two, was a two-bedroom residence, then they could rent out one of the, the bedrooms in, in that apartment.
But were we mixing owner with renter?
I, I, I'm not here mixing owner with renter. We, I don't think we, we say owner occupied, you're right Fran, we say owner occupied, and the owner is the owner of the building.
Right.
So, in an apartment building, the only person who could rent out, who could obtain a short-term rental permit would be the owner if the owner resided in that, in that structure.
Got you, okay, all right.
And the counter, the counter, I think, I'm, I'm thinking of some of the comment in the public hearing, is that in the B1, on Main, on Main Street, in the B1, there is, there is a legal path to creating accommodation, legal accommodation. That is not this one, but allows, but allows, if you were one, if you were wanting to make short-term rental occupation, sorry, if you're wanting to make a short-term rental unit out of an apartment you own in a building on Main Street, there is already a legal path to do that.
No, no, sorry. Go back to the first part of what you said.
Okay.
If you're an occupant of an apartment in, on Main Street, or anywhere else, you're an occupant, not an owner. The only, the only con, that, that there are condos in the village, but those are typically in the R3 district. I, I don't know of anyone on Main Street who has sold a unit within their building.
No, I, I think, is that if you, if you wanted to turn that into a bed and breakfast, then that's one way legally you can.
Yeah, exactly. Yes. If I, if I own a building on Main Street, and it has a, is a storefront on the, on the street level and two apartments above, I have a legal pathway to turn those units into a bed and breakfast, which is a form of short-term rental addressed in other parts of our code.
Yes, yes, and
I think it did.
It requires a license, so it is much more regulated by the state.
Right, right.
Okay, so the definition of residence, we're keeping as it is? And we, more information on the short-term rental unit definition?
Fran, what I would recommend there, in residence, I, I would recommend we delete only one short-term rental unit would be, will be allowed in a residence.
Just take that out?
Yes, because I think it's covered under the short-term rental unit.
Yeah.
Short-term rental may be the entire, okay, everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. And that makes that. Okay. Short-term rental unit, we just edited building, if a building contains multiple residences, only one residence in the building shall be permitted to obtain a short-term rental permit. Let's treat it thoroughfare, however distinguished we just.
Just for a second, shouldn't that be also, if it, so we described the short-term rental unit, right? Do we need to add, if a building contained, should that be there, or should that be in regulations? Because we're, we're talking, this is, this is a definition.
Yeah, okay, I, I, I see that, yeah, okay, so it should be moved.
Con, the con, right, the patient needs to be adjusted, is that what you mean?
Under 100-7, Fran.
I'm putting things at the bottom of 100-7 that we will have to go back and put them in some kind of order eventually. Oops, I don't know what I just did, I just did something. Okay. Okay, the map, thoroughfare, street, thoroughfare, however distinguished, which is shown on the official map, what official map?
Let me ask a, a different question, do we need this definition?
I don't think so, what, what do we need it for, where, where else do we use it?
I mean, we, we've, we've, may refer to street someplace.
Well, in your, linear, in the linear measure, do we refer to street?
Leave that for now, just in case we do go with something on that.
So street is referenced.
Put a note on that, if we don't use it in the linear feet, distance, whatever, then we can delete.
Okay. Okay, here we go, short-term rental classifications, fees, and total number, this is the fun part. Hosted, 17 registered STRs, fee is stated in the master fee schedule, and then we go to whatever the regulations are. Unhosted, 34 registered short-term rentals fees are stated in the master, master fee schedule, all regulations stated in short-term rental requirements. And then special provisions, unlimited number in the village, $150 per year. Okay, is that the way we want to leave this for these classifications?
No, in the first one, hosted, regulations, I think we should repeat the phrase, all regulations stated in short-term rental requirements. This, this is just the classification. The classification, the fees, and total number allowed. And actually, we can delete that, we can delete all regulations.
All right, so just take this.
Yeah, I think so, and then you can take out the same from unhosted, and you can take out unlimited number in the village, period, take out the, the fee. And say, fee in the masters, fee is stated in the master's fee schedule.
We need to say unlimited number in the village, the others don't say that?
Just unlimited number, you mean? So. That seems obvious, yeah, they can take it out.
So how about we say unlimited registered STRs?
Okay. Yeah, sure. Let's see, H-E-D-U-L-E, and master has an E.
Set of unlimited number, or unlimited number of registered STR, STRs?
Well, unlimited registered STRs. I don't care.
Yeah, that's what we did with the other one, so.
Yeah.
Following.
Oh, I see, yep, I see how you're making it consistent.
All right, delete, delete, delete. There should be a period. There should be a period. Fee is in the master's schedule.
Are we coming?
Those a hundred and fifty dollars, good, we all agree on a hundred and fifty dollars?
Except we're gonna take it out, because the fee is gonna be in the master fee schedule.
Right.
To answer your question, I'm filing one fifty.
That was suggested to me the cost, so if that means the cost, then we're good.
The special provisional is a one-time permit and, um, okay. So short-term rental require, let me just go back and clean up some of this junk.
Can I ask a question about that? So if I, if I have. I, I obtained elsewhere, we have the, the number of day, a limit on the number of days that I can use a special provisional permit, right? We have fourteen days somewhere?
Yes, in the definition.
Okay, so, so we don't need to reestablish that here?
Definition is one-time permit issued for up to fourteen consecutive nights, any calendar year.
So I could do it, I could do two days in July and ten days in September and.
No.
Not to fourteen, done.
I don't understand it that way, it's a one-time permit for one time.
Well, but what, but I thought that the issue people were raising was. They wanna go away and do a house swap or rent out their house where they're on vacation. If we don't allow them flexibility for what the fourteen days are, you're basically telling someone you have to take a two-week vacation. I don't think you want it.
Well, then I think they can get a regular short-term permit, if they.
They wanted to, they wanted to do two days now and three days in July and six days in August and whatever.
So they paying a hundred and fifty dollars every time, even though they're not, get a new.
No, they're.
No, then they get a regular unhosted permit.
Right.
They become an unhosted STR.
Okay.
And they can do as many, as many days as are permitted.
So what's the scenario of special provisional is useful?
It's for if somebody wants to go on vacation, like, there it is. You know, if somebody wants to take four vacations a year, you know, I don't think we can satisfy that need.
We don't care what the minimum is, we just care what the maximum is, right?
Yeah, yes.
You can go away for a weekend, you know, or West Point graduation, which is the big thing up here. You can get thousands of dollars to rent for West Point graduation for.
I was, I was, folks who did multiple weekends, but I understand the argument that that then becomes an unhosted. STR when it's broken up throughout the year like that.
Right.
I still think.
Okay, um, and, and notice that it's fourteen, up to fourteen consecutive nights in any calendar year.
Right, got it.
So it's one time up to fourteen days.
Makes sense now. I still think that.
Okay.
Unhosted is the more problematic. And that should be the smaller number of permits, hosted are the ones where there is, there is direct supervision by a resident. And I would think that we want to.
I think most, I would agree with that, I think, but most of the rentals are probably unhosted.
Right, but, but trying to encourage hosted rather than unhosted, since unhosted seem to be the more problematic of the two?
I'm, I'm not sure we're gonna encourage one way or the other, um. You know, I don't, I think if we, if you, if you wanna have an unhosted STR, um, you're not gonna change to hosted just because we say.
Well, so what are you solving for, is it, is it?
We're not, we're not.
Well, I don't think we're trying to solve for one versus the other.
If you're solving for neighborhood impacts.
I think we're accommodating, and I think our whole law addresses the problems that we had with unhosted. You know, so I think you look at the whole law, what we tried to do is minimize chances for the problems that we saw, like having. Twelve people in one room or whatever, just.
Okay.
So I think that unhosted, I think, I would, I think, and I don't have that on this, but most of the places are unhosted. And so this get accommodates that, and with the rest of the laws, I think it hopefully will help, I think that's what we're trying to do.
So between, between the limited number and the regulations in place. You, you feel that there's sufficient sort of bumpers in, in the lane?
I think that, I think that we might find out a year down the line or two years down the line that we need to flip these numbers around a bit.
I, I get it, concept, I get it.
I'd like to go back to, um, the definition of hosted. It says a short-term rental during which the host remains onsite during the inter- entire term of the rental. I think that should say a short-term rental during which the host remains in the building. Or in the residence. During the entire term of the rental. This, this then prevents people who have, um. Accessory buildings. Into which they may decamp during the period of the short-term rental. And that's not what we were intending here.
So if you have a, an accessory building that is, has a permit to be livable, um. I, I don't, I don't know, Marie, I'm not too sure, I. I'm not sure I mind if somebody is renting, if you're living in the accessory building and someone's renting your house.
And you're on the property, right, you're gonna be minding from, you might be minding from an accessory building, but you're still minding the property while there are renters.
Uh, you are remote from them.
You're in.
You're on the property.
The property, with small lots.
Right, right, if you're on the property on a small lot, if you're on the property on a larger lot, that is not exactly the case.
So what, 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 what parcel do you imagine in the village where? And a, uh, an owner who decamps an accessory building wouldn't be aware of what's happening in the primary structure?
Um, so Mountain Avenue is an example.
What's the example?
The rental on Mountain Avenue that had been causing, has been causing a number of problems. And.
Those people weren't in residence then, right, the hosts, hosted, that they left the property, they were vacating the property.
I have no idea whether or not they were on the property or not on the property. But it seems to me when we say in residence, uh, we're. When we say in the residence, we're saying, this is the way you go for a hosted rental. So for example, another one, a house that's a duplex. Where the owner owns both, both sides of the house. Can that owner rent out the other side of the house? They are not in residence on the other side of the house, they're only in residence on the one side of the house.
I, I think people that, in those circumstances, in, in such close quarters in the village, if the owner is on the property. They're aware of the activity in the primary structure.
And it could be unhosted.
Say that again?
It could be unhosted.
That's, that's what it would be, is an unhosted rental.
They could still rent it if we're allowing that, uh, but it would be unhosted.
Hosted, exactly.
So it's not prohibiting anybody.
I don't see it as being unhosted, but okay.
I know, oh, oh. Okay, with this, I. So on Church Street, the, um. Side-by-side is short-term rentals on the one side and the owner lives on the other side, that's considered unhosted, is that?
Yes, I would consider that an unhosted.
I, I, I disagree, but I'm in the minority.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, um, let that one ride, I'll see, I, I feel like, I feel like it would be considered hosted because he's there. As long as they're not leaving the property, but I'll, we'll let it ride and see how it rides out.
Yeah, keep in mind, keep in mind when we say they're not leaving the property. A hosted rental, theoretically, the host is in the building twenty-four hours a day. That's what hosted implies to me.
Well, potentially, but does that mean that this, that the, the, the property owner can't go to the grocery?
Hmm.
Go to the paint store, can't?
That's correct, that's correct.
Ridiculous, no way to regulate that, that's ridiculous.
So in the duplex situation, there's no reason why that person and the other is gonna have to stay in that apartment.
Say that again?
In the duplex situation, uh, the owner can rent out the side-by-side apartment and he can take off.
Yeah. Agent, if he's not in residence.
Okay, so then he's, then he's gonna be considered unhosted.
Right, he's considered unhosted.
Alright, I'll, I'll live with that one, um. Alright, let me see here.
I just, it's setting up, setting up the, the expectation that a, that a property owner. Who hosts an Airbnb does not leave the house in any minute, that, that a portion of the.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think.
Not realistic.
I don't think that's.
That's what it sounds like.
But.
I don't.
Right, but I mean, that's not exactly what we're defining. But you need, you need to be here, you're not going on vacation, you're not.
Right, right, within twenty minutes.
To be here watching, watching your guests.
Or you're at the movies.
If we require, okay, down to one hundred, there's three, the classifications, special provisional, um. And this is my note, don't ask me how, uh, there seem to be concern that residents will not get permits for this. Uh, if we require that the permits be posted in the front window, and that would be under regulations, but that I think would. In, in all cases, I think permits should be posted so the people know that you have a permit.
I think that's a great idea.
Okay, we're down to requirements, um, do we want to, and, and, um. We wanna have specific requirements for everything, and then specifically for hosted, specifically for unhosted, or specifically for a special provisional. I don't know how much of this we can break out.
So in A, that would be, that's applicable to unhosted.
Right.
And that's all it's applicable to.
Right. Alright, so we wanna.
I would just change B to say no more than thirty-four unhosted registered STRs. Registered, unhosted. Whatever. You know, you can put your unhosted wherever you want.
I'll put it there.
Okay, and then I would duplicate this. And, uh, say no more than seventeen registered hosted STRs. Shall be allowed at any one time throughout the village.
Do we need this, this parentheses, five percent of the total R1, I1 and B1, does that need to be in there?
We kept, we captured that from what, that which we deleted in the definitions.
So we wanna keep it in there?
I think it, it is helpful, it's the justification.
I just asked a question, who, if I'm reading this, what do. What does that mean to me if I'm just, if I wanna get a permit? Like, what's the, the five percent? That's.
It was, it was more, I think, um, people wanna know where did we pull the number from? Right, that, you know, they think we just pulled it out of our hats, uh, and so we put that in there for an explanation. I'm not sure it belongs in requirements.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like that kind of is confusing as a. I mean, this document is for. Those who are going to enforce, but also for those who are going to pursue. A permit, and I, I'm not sure. I mean, I don't know that I would get hung up on it, but I just don't, I don't know that I would understand what that meant if I. If I personally had to address that, or if that's something that's being addressed by somebody else, right?
Should it be in, in, in the pur- purpose, rather than in the requirements?
Well, if that's how you figured out the number, then I would think that that would be a better place for it.
Can certainly do that.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think it's a requirement, so.
So, if.
I'll put it somewhere as an explanation.
I would cut that Fran and put it. Under. The purpose. As. Um. AI. And.
I know it's not right. And now we have added additional.
How about saying, um, this law, this local law is based upon. Five percent of the total. R1 property, sorry, not in H, but in I?
Right, I'm just sort of.
Yeah, okay.
My curse seems to get where I don't want it.
It has a mind of its own.
It does.
This law is based on.
Okay, but it's not, but now what, that's just for unhosted?
Yes.
Because.
Yeah, how about, um, the limits of this, the limit. Of the unh-. Uh, no, can't say it there, uh, the, the limit. On certain. Um. Certain types of.
There you go.
Short-term rentals is based on.
That works.
I can spell. Spell, my fingers just don't, just can't. Is based. One, whoops.
That looks good.
Okay, they have to be organized, but anyway.
Yeah, and I think, I think there's, there's a note that we need to go through and, uh, renumber some of these.
Yeah.
I think, we've got one oh three three, we've got one oh three dash three twice.
Okay.
Okay.
Try, start there. Uh, okay, so this came out. And unhosted. No more than thirty-four registered unhosted STR should be allowed at any one time throughout the village, and more than seventeen registered. Hosted STR should be allowed anytime.
For, um, consistency, through the rest of the document, you identify hosted first and unhosted?
Oh, Kathleen, you're confusing now, gotcha.
I woke up in the middle of the night and thought, how can I frustrate Fran in one hundred dash?
Thanks, it's very easy to frustrate me these days, there.
Fran.
Thank God for cut and paste.
Fran, we're also going to need to renumber the, uh, index.
Right, okay.
Okay, and we'll do that some other time.
STR permits should be decided by public lottery, is that hosted and unhosted?
Uh, why don't we come back to that?
Cause you're not deciding that the temporary ones by, or special provisional by, by lottery.
Can we come back to this, Fran?
Sure. We can, my note. Come on. Okay, uh, let me see. Each property that I, can only be used for one STR at any given time, all tax.
Okay, so right there, um, okay. That actually addresses the, um, apartments. Because it's one tax ID.
Okay.
But I, I wouldn't change anything.
Okay, well, STS must have a village called short-term rental permit to operate in the village, STR permit will be good for one year, or. Um, or one rental, depending on whether it's a provisional or not, right?
Uh, well.
Hosted, uh, hosted or unhosted STR permits?
Yes.
Now, even the other one should be good for one year. I would leave it.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. We're allowed only our one.
Gonna excuse myself for a minute, I'll be right back.
No, sorry, you can't. Oh, I had a question, and I know we, you guys had added the I1, uh, at one point, but adding the I1. But adding the I1 changes the number, the 655 number.
No, no, it doesn't Fran, I, sorry. I went, I went back over the analysis of the units available, and I1 was included. All of the I1s on, on the boulevard, all on Rock Street, and all on Fair Street, they were all included.
Okay, thank you.
So the number stays.
Good. Okay, H, accessory building cannot be used as an STR. You have rework, is that reworked, okay?
Um. Yes.
And then we're adding temporary structures, tents, trailers, blah, 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 are not contemplated in this regulation, are prohibited for the use of STRs that we know.
We could, we could actually say that temporary structures, tents, trailers, and recreational vehicles are prohibited for the purposes of of STR.
Okay, so.
I think that affirmative statement is better.
Do I need that comma after vehicles?
I don't think you do.
Didn't think so. Okay, no STR permit will be allowed for any property within 300 linear feet in any direction, here we go. Now, didn't we just stick this someplace else?
Um.
That was the one we had to, we questioned up above.
But that brings me back to 300 linear feet in any direction would also mean behind.
Okay, but then we, that's why we want to change this.
Yeah, we have to fix it.
We need to, we need to, first of all, find out, because isn't this the same statement basically that we had up above?
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm looking at 100 dash 7. Um, no, it's not in 100 dash 7, so maybe you moved it right to here.
I don't think, I, I don't think we moved this one. Um.
Thought we agreed that it didn't belong where it was, but we needed to address it somewhere.
We did, um, what did I do with it?
I think you said dropping stuff down at the bottom, I think.
Maybe that's what I I don't think I stuck it there, but that's okay, all right, we'll, we'll come across it.
If you did, it was perfect Fran.
Yeah, right, fits nicely, um. I moved it into 100 dash 7 down the bottom, and J. Marie.
Okay.
It's, uh, it's sort of off to the side, it didn't line up properly.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
So how does this sound? Registered STRs shall not abut or join one another. Additionally, STRs on the same street shall not be closer than 300 feet.
Bingo.
Okay, don't forget that, because I gotta go find it again. All right, do we want to leave it here, are we putting it in? This is requirements, is it requirement or regulation?
It's a requirement.
Okay.
It's a requirement to get the permit.
So you get D.
Registered, and you can reword this, uh, registered STRs shall not be, shall not abut or join one another. Additionally, STRs on the same street shall be no closer than 300 feet.
That's perfect. Uh, a but or a join, a, a join.
That's somewhat, that's, that's somewhat redundant.
Yeah, I've, I don't know what the difference is, or what's a budding and a
Well, a budding and adjoining are covered under 300 feet in, 300 feet on the street.
No, but it's not on, on, not on the rear of the lot.
So a but is having a common boundary.
Right, that's what we need.
That's the rear, that's the rear. And a join is, is probably also having a common
Next to or joined with, they're very similar. But I think the common brown, boundary is what Dave's aiming for, right?
Yes.
Well, but, but that's covered in 300 feet.
No, it isn't. It's not behind you. We don't, I firstly, don't want to regulate the distance behind me, or
Okay, but when, but when you say a but or a join, it, it includes property behind you.
Right.
Yes, it does, but
But it's not at 300 feet.
Doesn't address 300 feet on the street, it addresses one thing, and the other addresses the other.
But you are then by default addressing behind.
Yes.
It's a Fran, and you just, you don't want that.
Same street shall not be 300 meters feet.
I thought, I thought I understood you to be saying you did not want to regulate, for example, parcels behind Fran.
Exactly.
Okay, so then you should not say, shall not a but or a join, because that's going to mean rear
No, no.
Rear abut.
No. It'll just, the only one that'll affect will be the one property behind her that it butts it.
We were talking at 300 feet stretches.
Saying, I see what you're saying, yeah, yeah, I got it, I got it, so if I have, let's say I have a 100-foot backyard, and there are three parcels that somehow managed to abut my backyard, that's what you mean, right?
Yes.
Got it.
Yeah, but not the one across
And then 300 feet will address the street and distance on the street.
But they're still, if they're not abutting directly, they're still sharing a common boundary if you use a but, so I think you want a join.
I try to put a but or, and or a join, or a join.
So a but, a but is share a boundary.
Yes.
And a join is next to or joined with, I guess it doesn't make that large difference.
So if we say a but, they share as a boundary, so that with all the properties, uh, on the rear, or off to your right or left, whichever, those all can't be STRs, if they're budding your property.
So Fran, if you were to follow through the logic of this on your parcel that
House behind me.
That would scoop in the brick house, right?
Right, and that's it.
Great, and then
And then the 300 feet would scoop my neighbors on both sides.
Actually, the, the abutting, the abutting gets your, your neighbor on your left and your right.
It does, but then 300 feet
300, 300 feet get your neighbor on the corner.
But on the same street.
Right, on the same street, okay, but then it also gets the Valentines.
So, and so if I, if I think about my, my property abuts both Five Cedar Street and what, uh, Seven Street or Cedar Street, but Seven, we abut just at a corner. So, knock him out?
Well, it's three, when it comes, talks about the same street, we're talking about 300 feet.
No, on the same street, but, but Kathleen
Yeah.
A but, you don't share a common boundary.
Okay, okay, I see the logic in that, so our, our corners are abutting, but our boundary line isn't abutting.
Correct, and, uh, so I would, I would eliminate and or a join, and a join is A D J O I N.
Yeah.
I figured that looked funny, but we're eliminating it, so I don't have to
Yeah, I think a but, a but is very, is clearer when you look at the definition. Okay, now I got it, I'm sorry that it took 10 minutes to
That's okay, um, okay, so we're good with this, and I'm going to take it out of 100.7 in the regulations.
Okay.
Says it, it, a minimum distance of 300 linear feet in any direction permitted, blah, 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 has been established. Um, I'm taking this whole paragraph out, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we're back up. We are making
Where are we?
Yeah, I know, we're back up to page, um. Okay, page four.
Right.
Page four, uh, J, we just added registered, uh, so on and so forth, that's that.
So, that are in yellow, are you just accepting them now, or no?
I'm accepting most of them unless we still have a question. Um, this temporary structures, tents, and trailers, I, are prohibited for the purpose of STRs. There's a note that says move to 103H. Um. Is that moved? Do I need to take it out of here?
I, I think you moved it to 104, which is fine, because you renamed number 103.
Okay. All right, it's to be consolidated.
Land in 100 dash four, that's the application procedure. You want it land in three, don't you?
Sorry, no, 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 we had two 103s, Fran.
Yeah, I just renumbered.
One, the second 103 to 104, she's got to go and rename 104 to 105 and so on down there.
Okay, I got it.
Yeah. Yeah, this needs a whole bunch of renumbering, which can be done offline. Uh, at K, whatever K should be, each STR permit will allow only one STR rental at any given time. Uh, um, Kathleen, this means to one party, one group of guests, but, because below we asked for a number of location of bedrooms, maybe this needs to be clearer.
What Dave read out earlier from Nantucket addressed that.
Okay.
Made that clearer.
So we're good, we can leave?
Yeah, we're good.
Well, if, I think, if, if the direct, if we, if you use the language that Dave suggested just a few minutes ago, that, that clarifies, that clarifies what is not clear now.
Okay, so I put that in. Um, didn't I put that in as you read it, the language?
What was the language, Dave?
Uh, let's see, I, I gotta change it up a little for us, customize it. Short-term rental operators shall offer all short-term rentals to only one party of short-term renters at a time. Comma, not rented as separate bedrooms, beds, or spaces to separate parties.
Okay, and I think that's what we're saying here.
I just think it's clearer the way Dave, the, the language that Dave captures is clearer.
That Nantucket captured.
That Nantucket captured, God bless Nantucket.
Then no.
Dave, can you read it one more time, please, I'm sorry.
Uh, short-term rental operators or hosts, whatever you want, sure.
Yeah, make it host.
Yeah.
Short-term rental shall offer also to only one party of short-term renters at a time, comma, not rented as separate bedrooms.
Slow down, slow down.
Fran, stop that fast.
Sorry, I wasn't looking.
Type that fast.
Come on, we're
I used to be better at this, you know, when I was about 20. That was a long time ago.
What's your number count?
Short-term rental hosts shall offer, shall offer
Um, shall offer all short-term rentals. Ready?
Go ahead.
Uh, only one party of short-term
Get that.
At a time, comma, not rented as separate bedroom.
Hold on a second, hold on a second. At, at a time, comma.
I can clean up them. Separate. Go ahead, separate bedrooms?
Comma, beds, comma. Or spaces to separate parties.
Okay. I think I got it.
Yeah.
What did I do? I just did something weird. Not sure if that should be capitalized, okay, so this comes out.
And Fran, hosts at the, at the beginning should be capitalized.
Should be capitalized.
Short-term rental hosts.
Short-term rental hosts shall offer all short-term rentals to only one party of short-term renters. And it sounds like Peter Piper picked the peck. That's what it really does. At a time, not at this.
Yeah, can you, can you highlight this, because we, we cover this someplace else, and I want to make sure we're not duplicating it, or in conflict with one another. And I think it's earlier. So if you could just make it as a comment, I'll, I'll go back and check.
Right.
But you will match it to this language, to the updated language?
Uh, we're, we're, to a language that makes sense for our, our code.
Well, right, based on this
Okay.
On Dave's
Short-term rentals in an R1 or I1 zoning district shall be required to have one off-street parking. Um, okay, so we, we're leaving that. Uh, I saw the discussion back and forth, so
I, I, I see what, what Marie's point is.
Okay. Look at that, we jumped a whole bunch of them. A hosted, all right, rentals should be minimum of two consecutive, maximum of short-term rentals. Unit. A maximum number of nights maybe rented out is 60, are we keeping the 60? Rentals shall be a minimum of two consecutive nights, a maximum of 29 consecutive nights. Only occupied structures shall be used for STRs, and we defined owner occupied above.
Yeah, can, can we stop for a moment and back up? And go through these and identify which apply to hosted and which apply to unhoused.
Yep. Um. Public lottery is
We're going to leave that in, and we'll come back to public lottery when we go to the method, okay.
Each property within the village can be used only once, yeah, that's for everything.
Right.
All STRs
Yep.
Uh, to operate.
Yeah.
Finish the conversation last week about number of days, I thought Dave was, maybe I misunderstood, but I thought he was advocating for a different number than 60, but I don't remember if it was higher or lower.
Yeah, I thought it should be higher, but that was just my thought, so what people think, I, I think most others are definitely more.
Can we come back to that?
Yeah, that was down lower.
And so we need to come back, well, yeah, I think you, I think you said 90 was what you were looking at, another
Uh, that's what I suggest we would
Do we want to change it for, make it different for hosted than unhoused?
For what?
Well, where
The number of days.
Where are we now, Fran? Sorry, I
I, I, we were just here, now I'm, I'm, I'm looking for the 60 again.
Item M.
Oh, here it is, M, okay. And we're on page four again. Maximum number of nights, short-term rental unit maybe rented out is 60 per calendar year, do we want to make it 90 if it's hosted?
Three months out of 12, that when you describe it in that terms, it seems like quite a lot. But, but I can, I take Fran's point that you might w- want to treat hosted and not hosted differently. Because the, the impacts are more likely to be mitigated in a hosted STR.
I don't think that all of the impacts are, are mitigated in hosted versus unhoused.
I said more likely, I didn't say they're all mitigated, I said they're more likely to be hosted because there's an owner on
I mean, we're, we're still yeah. You know, there's a difference between loud noisy people at night, or taking property off of the rental rolls, um, so, you know, I'm not sure where we stay.
Someone home to address it. Someone in residence to address it, too. I could be comfortable with 90 for hosted and 60 for non, I throw that out.
Um, but we're still taking, well, we're still taking property off of the rental rolls, which is part of the original
So, so what we're, what we're dealing with here is, in terms of the number of nights, has, has nothing to do with what comes off of the property rolls or not, they all come off of the
That's true.
Long-term rental market.
Right, right.
Right, here, it's when people arrive late at night, or aft, at nine o'clock at night, and are, are noisy, car doors are slamming, blah, 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 that has nothing to do with hosted or unhoused, that's outside
A host on site come out and say, hey, could you keep it down, I have neighbors here.
Yeah, right, if they hear it, yeah.
Well, if you're, if a neighbor's hearing it, they're hearing it.
Unless they're parked in front of the neighbor.
I mean, should we leave 60 inches row with it and see what happens? I think, I, I heard both sides of, you know, people for and against this.
What does tweets, we haven't heard from tweets.
Fred's spinning.
Let me take
Um, I, I feel like, um, to me, 90 sounds like a lot. Um. I would say 60, and then if there's some if we find that there's some amazing reason why it needs to be increased, then I think we can address it, but I feel like 60 is like a solid number.
When you express it in terms of months, it, I
that would be my, that's my assessment.
Okay, so it sounds like majority of people think 60 is fine, so let's
Yeah, I, I look at it this way, 60 nights is 30 weekends, 90 nights is 45, 45 weekends.
Yeah, and when you express it in those terms, you get a better sense of impact, that's true.
Okay, so can, can we go back up? Okay, so can can we go back up and talk about which of these are hosted and which are unhosed?
Right, okay, so so we get the first two. The public lottery, we're waiting, the property ID, D is is good, everything.
E is everything, right.
Good for one year, we said is everything.
Yep.
G is everything.
Yes.
Accessory building, that's for everything.
Yes.
Temporary structures are prohibited, that's everything.
Yes.
Uh, not a but another, one another, that's for everything, right?
I would, I would, um, I would qualify that at the beginning. All registered SDRs, so not about one another. Just to make sure it's clear.
So if I decide to rent my house out for West Point weekend and there's already a hosted STR three hundred feet away, I can't do that?
Yes, and you'll find that out when you apply for your short-term rental permit at the previous year, yeah.
Okay, SDR hosts shall offer all short-term to only one party, okay.
Yes, so so this one I think should be both hosted, be hosted and unhosed.
What about the provisional?
You're right, Fran.
It's all.
I think it's all.
Okay. So are we, are we qualifying each of these?
Where where it's applicable.
Okay.
So. I'm sorry, somebody. About the, I'm still thinking about the provisional. And if it's, if it's no more than fourteen days a year. Well, I mean, I I guess, I guess what you're trying to do is is reduce where they can be around the village. But it seems.
I don't think we're trying to do that, I think we're, the provisional, I think we're trying to be flexible with the people it brought up that I want to rent my house out for a week and I.
Right, that's and that's what I'm, that's what I'm driving toward, is that if the provisional is included in the three hundred feet, the three hundred linear feet, then then you're limiting those, that type of of rental more than more than you might have, and are you wanting, is that the goal, are you wanting to do that, to make sure that if I, if there's an STR next door, I can't, I can't rent out for West Point graduation?
Let me, let me just sort of throw in, um, West Point graduation is big up here, so my gut feeling is everybody who has a STR, hosted, unhosed, or provisional is going to want to rent for West Point weekend, big bucks, and that's what they do. So if we don't limit it to the three hundred feet for the provisional, we're gonna have massive party people here. You know, if we, because provisionals at this point are unlimited, anybody can do it, just get a permit. There's no numbers, there's no anything, so if we don't limit it by three hundred feet, we're gonna have a village person full of really happy cadets and their families who really want to party. And it could be, it could be disastrous.
Okay, I'm just wanting to make sure that we're, that we're meeting the goal we're trying to meet, and it sounds like we are.
I think so. Okay, um. All right, so L, SDRs are in R1, off, one off-street parking, that's for all of them?
And yeah, any, yeah, all SDRs, I would say it's for all of them.
Maximum number of nights be rented out, maximum number of nights for a hosted or unhosed, right?
Yes.
Of nights. That's the number of nights, A, hosted or unhosed. Short-term rental unit, maybe. Okay, so that's hosted or unhosed. Rentals should be a minimum of two consecutive nights and maximum of twenty-nine, all right, this is hosted or unhosed, right?
Except for, except for the provisional.
Right, so it's hosted or unhosed, right?
But do you, you say here that should you make reference to the provisional being fourteen days?
So hosted and unhosed rentals shall be a minimum.
Do we want to add the provisional?
Yes.
Rentals. Is it called provisional, I'm sorry.
I think you want it above N. Because N talks about minimum nights, and M, as in Mary, talks about maximum nights.
Gotcha, okay.
Did it say days or nights?
Nights.
Yeah.
Okay, only owner occupied structures can be used for any STR?
Yes.
Properties owned by corporation cannot be used as an STR. Um, this came up at the discussion, especially in the B1 district where some of the buildings are owned by corporations. We still gonna leave, still gonna leave, I mean, they can become BNB's if they want to.
Yes, and and by the way, I think those that spoke up at the, at the hearing, none of them were owner occupied.
Yeah, I don't think so either, okay.
But if you were just asking a question about the other portion of the code, if they were operating legally as a BNB, it wouldn't.
Doesn't fall under the STR.
I know, that's why I'm asking the question, so the legal pathway for the Airbnb, I'm sorry, for the, for the bed and breakfast, they would not have to be owner occupied to follow that path, so they, again, that that remains for those.
So, sorry, so, keep in mind that the BNB is in one thirty-four. It does not fall under one hundred, I understand that.
So it's a pathway for anybody on the B1 district to is an LLC or a corporation or whatever.
Is under one thirty-four.
It can become a BNB or a, or a hotel or whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, STR permits are not transferable, host and or agent must be available at all times to respond on site within twenty minutes to any issues that may arise, that's fine. Host. Host of the STR shall maintain record of the number of guests. Okay, so Kathleen, whoops, has my screen jumped twenty-five feet. It would, another option can be required, the host keep the record and that'd be made available to those code, and that's fine. Such record should be submitted to the village clerk every twelve months. I would leave be submitted. And at this point, it doesn't necessarily mean the village clerk has to review them, he has to file them with with whatever the STR stuff is. So I'm fine with the way it is, anybody else?
I just think it would be less, it would be less administrative work to say that the owner has to keep them and make them available on request.
But there, there's no administrative work unless the village requests that the clerk do some administrative work.
Well, and I mean, in addition to the permitting and the instructions.
Yeah, I mean, at this point, he just has to gather them or they just have to, and if you're applying for you. If you're applying for your new permit the next year and you haven't done that, then you're in trouble.
Yeah.
Application being completed.
Related to this, but how long are you required to keep this information?
The owner or the village.
Both.
The owners require. The owners require to keep it for twelve months. The village, it's up to the village how long they want to keep it. I I don't know that there's, right, Fran.
There are right, record retention laws, but I don't know if they would cover this.
Well, they'd probably be under building, under building records and building enforcement.
Not necessarily.
I think it would be separate and there should be a file for short-term rentals.
Yeah, that's where it would go, I would think.
But I'm, I'm thinking that the records retention policies might, might be appropriately similar to building, to code enforcement records.
Code enforcement records are strictly spelled out in the CEO chapter.
Right, I understand.
I doubt very much that short-term rental records are covered by the records retention schedule.
I'm saying you, you could, as a, as a locality, a municipality, if it seemed appropriate, follow the same process for STR record retention as you would for building enforcement records.
I guess there would be, you know, I mean, I don't think we have to write it in the code at this point.
Sure.
No, no, I I'm, I'm not asking.
No, no, I know that, yeah.
Point of clarification, because I was wondering then, like, what's the what's the purpose of keeping the information if it's not going to be kept for some purpose to affect change?
So.
And like, I did.
So a purpose is to ensure that at the next time that someone requests on a short-term rental, if they haven't submitted the records, they don't, they're not eligible.
Okay, so the clerk would go back and look to see, did this person do, did they submit their information?
Yeah.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're at hundred point four, which is probably supposed to be hundred dash five, application procedure, page five.
So W, so looking up above it, W is one of the cases, instances in the chapter that refers to street.
Okay.
And it seems to me that it could be street without the definition of the street. Under definitions, so that would be a lowercase s.
Okay, so the house number of the STR must be displayed.
Right.
On the STR property, easily read from the street, okay, no signage is allowed that defines the property. At this point, do we want to put something in here that basically says the permit must be displayed? In a window? The reason why I was thinking of this is, say, you don't know, I don't know my neighbor is renting an STR. I know they've gone away on vacation and suddenly there's somebody in their house. Now, if I, if I hear somebody, I'm gonna call the police unless there's a permit in the window that says, hey, you know, I've rented this, you know, this is a legitimate STR, do we want the permits to show in the windows?
Are you worried about that just for provisionals?
No, so Fran, a comment on that, I don't think, if I were renting my house or bedrooms in my house as a short-term rental, I don't think I would want that posted in the window. I think it could potentially invite intruders, whatever. What I, what I would suggest, however, is that using the village website, the addresses of SDRs could be there. Now, maybe, maybe that affords the same opportunity or mischief if somebody looks at the village website, but at least a passerby is not going to see it.
Or, or in the, in either case, rather than posting it, as long as, which I believe is part of the procedure, as long as they've registered with the village that they're renting, then the police know, so if I call the police and say, hey, there's an intruder in my neighbor's house, they can say, well, you know, we're looking down the list, I have rented this weekend, two, X, Y, Z, okay, so that's fine.
Like a good compromise between the two, right, so it's, it's available if someone calls in, but we're not posting it.
Right, which is, I think, part of the procedures. Okay, the application procedures are, and ignore my, ignore my question for right now, should this be divided? Okay, village advertising the paper of record, I don't believe we have to capitalize paper of record because it's not a defined term, or do we, Marie?
Uh, no, unless it's a defined term, we don't.
Okay.
Fran, can we make, can we make this one hundred dash five?
Sure. Village advertising the paper of record for STR permit applications no later than June fifteenth, July fifteenth of each year. Okay, when we're gonna start is still sort of up in the air at this point.
So this may have, yeah, A and B may have to be modified.
Right, and it may just be modified for the, for when we start. So.
Under C2, C left, print two, right, print, street can be lowercase.
Okay. Okay, Kathleen, that takes care of the sun setting. Street. Okay, okay. So we have to make sure the application procedure is the same for all different coins. Application must contain the following information, name, address, apartment number of applicable primary and cellular phone numbers and email address of the STR. Street address and tax ID number for the property, name, address, primary and cellular phone, that was of the authorized agent. Number of locations and bedrooms that will be offered in the STR. If multiple bedrooms are used in the STR, do we intend on the definitions that all of these bedrooms must be rented to a single, yes, does that, what we just wrote in there, Kathleen, answer this question? That the thing that we, Dave got from Nantucket, Kathleen answers this question?
Yes.
Okay, got you, that takes care of that problem. Notary statement that the STR is owner occupied, proof that the STR has been owner occupied by the person now applying for a minimum of three years prior to offering the property as an STR. I've read your, your statement, Kathleen. I'm not, I mean, at this point, anybody who's been doing it up until this point, I believe they've pretty much lived there for three years, and if they haven't, then, you know, we don't, um, the reason why we put this in is so people aren't buying properties just to make it a MSTRs.
No, I know, I'm, I think, and I agree with that going forward, I'm saying if you have property owners who are currently operating and have operated without complaint, why not allow those folks to be eligible in the first year? As sort of part of the sun setting process, like, like the, the property we've talked about on Constitution.
What's the property on Constitution?
The Velodo property, right, they're operating without complaints.
But they've had it for more than three years.
Okay, so another, is there another that's? I was just trying to think of, I was trying to think of accommodating the, the, the sun setting issue that the planning, the planning board raised.
I think we're doing a lot of accommodating.
Yeah, I think that.
I think three years is not a lot.
Yeah, we originally had this at five years, and we've cut it down. And, you know, there's always, you know, going back to those who have been doing it knowing very well, and and some of them who have been doing it know very well that this has been illegal in this village forever. So I'm, I'm not, I'm not, um, I don't agree with this to, to compromise on this particular, especially on this one. But that's just my vote.
I agree, Fran.
It sounds like Dave agrees too, so you're good.
Okay. Two documents that confirm the STR property is the owner's primary residence. Okay, federal income tax in the prior year.
So Fran, Fran, on this one, can we make, can we change this to be New York State income tax as opposed to federal income tax? Which is a further support for the fact that they are a resident.
That's fine with me, everybody okay with that?
Yep.
I don't know what the, the form number is.
Oh, I can look at. IT, IT, I think it's an IT two oh one.
I think you're right.
Dependent tonight, depends whether it's, you know, short-term or long-term.
Do you need to specify the document? Can you just say New York State income tax? Form?
We could.
That way if people are filing different, different forms, they all are submissive.
I know, they, they've, I'm going to take this out for the time, they have, they've added another weird one, and I don't know if it's for seniors, it was something weird.
But any, Marie, would, it, it sounds like any New York State income tax form would meet the concern you're raising?
Resident income tax. Oops, sorry, that's not what I wanted to do. It would have to be a resident income tax, not a non-resident. Because non-resident wouldn't help us at all. You could, you could work in New York and live in New Jersey.
Right.
Or Connecticut or whatever.
That makes sense.
Form from the prior year, which can be redacted.
Okay, so on that, just, it says tax form from the prior year. It says a tax form, should that be more explicit? I mean, I can get a form from last year.
Yeah. Yes.
More from last year, I redacted everything.
Yep, to govern.
Of process or something, I don't know.
Filed.
One required document is. One required document is a copy.
A copy of a filed. There you go.
It would help if my copy of a filed next state resident income tax from prior year, which can be redacted. Additional acceptable documents currently, driver's license, voter registration, village of Cold Spring Water bill. Okay. Two million dollars, I'm pretty sure that we got this from Karen, because we had this less, I believe. But I can, if you want.
I think he said it was too high, it should be a million.
That was the comment.
It should be a million?
I think that's what he said. I, I was talking to Jeff about it, I'm, I'm pretty sure that it was dropped, that it would be a million, and it would be, I guess it, it's quite a bit more to do to get two million versus one. You can double check with Jeff, Jeff has the answer, just put what, I mean, if everyone agrees, whatever Karen suggested, I think it was one though.
Is this? To the insurance that you have on your property already?
Yeah, not in addition.
Not in addition, just that you have that amount of insurance for your property. Liability, yes, yes.
Typically, the insurance company should know that you're renting your property because, you know, there may be, I mean, this is not covered here. But if you have insurance and you have somebody in your house that you're not there and they've destroyed something, you may not be covered. Because they're not, you're according to the insurance company legally there, but they're, they're insurance companies, because I spoke to a friend of mine who does insurance, when we started this, insurance companies are still floundering like the rest of us with short-term rentals and what they actually need. But I'll check this one with Jeff and Karen.
We also, you also are wanting to make sure that there's enough coverage if someone is hurt in your property, is injured in your, if a renter is injured in your property.
Or if somebody who's in your property destroys your neighbor's property. For whatever reason.
I mean, whatever, whatever Karen suggested, I, I thought he suggested two, but, but maybe Jeff.
Okay, we'll double check, because I know we're, we're going to be doing insurance on Monday. Okay, location of the house number as displayed on the STR property. Location of the off-street parking space applicable to the R1 district zone. Record of number and dates of guests from the current care on the year of property received in STR. Um, do we want this from the previous calendar year? This is an application must contain the following. Do we want?
For the previous calendar? Yes, yes.
I put it here. Okay. Host will sign an indemnification, whole house agreement, agreed. This wording, I think, came directly from either John or from Karen.
It came from John.
Okay. Any host will, the shared driveway must include with the host's application for an STR permit, written notaried statement from each property owner who shares a driveway with the host stating that they agree to sharing the driveway with the STR guests. All right, during the period from September to Ju, September thirtieth, all submitted applications will be verified, so these dates.
Does that match with the change you made above? So.
We just, we're going to check the dates.
Okay. Um, also, just the spacing is different than the spacing in all the other paragraphs. At least my, what I'm.
Right, no.
No, it's, it's just different in the indemnification clause. That's where the spacing is different.
Yeah.
Fran, this should be one hundred five dash six, application verification.
Okay, give me one second. All submitted applications, if any of the application information cannot be verified, the person who submitted will be notified that the application is not yet considered properly. Person will be able to correct their application and or correct the condition prior to September thirtieth.
That should be highlighted as well, check the dates. The, the last two sentences.
Public lottery system. If the number of applications of unhoused and short-term rental permits exceeds the total number allowed.
So this. So this should be if the number of applications for hosted and or unhosted.
Lottery will be held to determine which permits will be issued in the following. I know, Dave, you questioned.
Is it helpful to start the paragraph with the statement that this, this, the public lottery system does not apply to, uh, what were you calling them? The temporary.
Provisional.
The provisional.
Provisional.
And then from there, roll out to if the number of applications for hosts that are unhoused to hosted, blah, blah, blah.
We could.
Just so it's clear.
If the number of applications for hosted or unhoused and short-term rentals exceeds the total number allowed, then lottery will be held to determine which permits will be issued. And the just the wording back here is, is the only difference.
Dave was asking if.
Question is.
The right word.
If the right procedure is correct. Whoops. About the procedure for the public lottery is as follows.
Is that what you meant, Dave?
I was looking at something else, so I was lost, sorry. I was looking back for the liability insurance thing. Where are we, sorry?
One hundred seven.
We're looking at where you, we're questioning the word procedure for the lottery system. Oh, we're one hundred dash seven on page six.
On page six?
Page six, it's one hundred, now one hundred dash seven?
Right.
Okay. Second paragraph, if the number of applications for hosted or unhoused and short-term rental permits exceeds the total number allowed, then lottery will be held to determine which permits will be issued. I just changed the last sentence. The procedure for the public lottery is as follows. Is that good?
Yeah, that sounds fine.
That's good. That's good. Okay, I'll leave your comment in there, Marie, this needs to be changed in other places.
Okay.
Further clarification.
To be changed to other places?
I guess the lottery, we just have to go back and check to see where it is in other places.
Oh, in terms of the, of the, the provisionals?
No, in general.
In general.
In general, just to see, okay. So once the application information is verified, the application will be given a lottery number, will be eligible for the public lottery for the following year. From the total number of properly completed and verified applications, thirty-four.
Host, unhosed and seventeen unhosed, unhod, seventeen hosted and thirty-four unhosed lottery numbers will be randomly drawn.
Um, may I, may I ask you to go back to something related to this?
No, no, no.
Please, please. I, I was walking out of the room when you started to talk about the impact of including I one, and I didn't hear Marie's answer to Fran's question.
You checked it.
And it worked, we're still good with numbers.
Yes.
It was already taken into consideration when we counted.
Got it, okay.
Okay, um, I think, yeah. I'm sorry, Kathleen, I'm sort of, my mind's going.
You're fine, you're good.
Okay, so here. So, so on this one, B, order may be important here. Do we, do we draw seventeen hosted first and then thirty-four unhosed? Because as soon as you draw one, you potentially knock out others. So I, I would think that what we would want to do is do hosted first and then unhosed.
Okay, so we need to reword this. An application is verified.
You're thinking.
If you draw a number, it depends, I guess, how, how we're, the number, how we're, you know, tying it back to the application, but if you draw someone, wouldn't they have hosted on there?
Well, I would, I would think that what you would do is separate the hosted from the unhosed applications. And then, and then you would draw first, well, what I'm proposing is that you draw first seventeen hosted and, and some of them may be knocked out by host, other hosted, and then you go to unhosed, and some of those will have been knocked out already by previously drawn applications.
But if you just, well, just, I, I, I'm fine with either, if you, if you're just drawing them and you draw, say the first one you draw says it's hosted, that would go towards the seventeen or the.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
You're thinking of.
So I don't know.
One bin, Dave?
What's that?
You're thinking of all the applications in one bin.
All the applications are in one bin, and whether we're pulling numbers or however we do it, whatever, you know, is associated with that application, it's a number or a letter, whatever. If seventeen's drawn and that's, you know, seventeen is hosted, then you put that in the hosted pile, that's one less there. I don't, I don't see the need to separate.
I was thinking of separating them.
You can't separate, you'd have to look at them and separate them.
Separate them.
I'm fine.
If you separate them unhosed is always going to be at a locational disadvantage, and the question is whether you, that's what you intend. Because they'll, they'll be knocked out by the seventeen hosted. The potential for knocking out unhosed will always go, will always, will always exist because they've been knocked out by the hosted.
So, so, and, and I'll state it, I agree with what you said, I'll state it a different, a different way.
Okay.
The second one is always disadvantaged by the first one that's drawn. The third one is always disadvantaged by the first and second one that are drawn.
All too true.
So the, the farther you go into the fifty-one that you're going to accept, the more that have not yet been drawn are disadvantaged by the ones that have already been drawn and approved. Yeah, so the question is, do you want to do random drawings between
Right.
Random sequence of drawings between the pile of fifty-one? Or do you want to do hosted first and unhosed second, or do you want to do unhosed first and hosted second?
I don't see why there's a disadvantage, and I, we're not lumping, there's not fifty-one permits we're giving out, we're giving out seventeen where people will put on their application that they're unhosed or hosted, won't they? Or are you saying that they'll put both down?
No, no, let's say you get seventy applications.
Right.
Of which twenty-five are hosted and thirty-five or forty-five are unhosed.
Right.
If you throw them all together and, and then start picking, and the first one that you pick is a hosted one, then everything that comes out after that now has location dependencies. Such that the first one that you draw will clearly get a permit. The second one that you draw may or may not get a permit based upon its proximity to the first.
Okay, I know what you're saying, I thought it was just, I wasn't looking at the proximity to think.
So, so you do that proximity, if you always draw, if you don't do it randomly, you're always, you're always going to be giving
Preference to.
To hosted.
Preference to hosted or preference to unhosed.
Right.
Whatever sequence you follow.
Right.
Another, another scenario. Next year, we get fifteen applications for hosted. There's no lottery. Those fifteen are going to get it.
Yeah, right. Well, 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 not necessarily.
Provided that they're within the distance, but there will be a lottery for a hosted.
Inspection requirements.
Yeah.
Well, they, they don't get to the lottery until they've passed the inspection.
Understood, got it.
No, no, I'm wrong, I'm wrong.
No.
I'm wrong. Once they're drawn, they go to the inspection.
Right, but if you get fifteen of hosted, there won't be a hosted lottery, those people don't have to go in a bin. They do have to be measured by distance, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes.
But they, but we won't be drawing a lottery for them.
But, but they.
Basically be yea or nay depending on their position.
But, but, so I'm, I'm going to respectfully disagree with that. If you've got fifteen hosted, do you automatically give them an, an, a, a, do they automatically win, win the lottery? And then all of the unhosed that you have will be disadvantaged by their proximity to the fifteen hosted?
I would say yes, I mean, say, sorry, you have fifteen hosted that are all spaced out so that they're not three hundred feet and they're not avoiding somebody else. Those fifteen people, because the way we're writing this, it says if the number of applications exceeds the total number allowed, then we have a lottery. So if the number of applications for hosted or unhosed does not exceed it, there's no lottery for that particular group.
So that's a problem, right?
So they, they get in first, so what do we do?
So that's a problem.
That goes back to what I was saying earlier about whether you are by default or purposefully encouraging or, or not encouraging, but giving preference to hosted or unhosed, because it sounds like, again, going back to the, to the comment we heard back in the two thousand nineteen meeting, it sounds like the unhosed. it sounds like the unhosed scenario is where there are greater impacts. And so if, if you, if you are taking a position that hosted is the preferred format in terms of potential neighborhood impacts, you would want to draw hosted first and want them to have preference over unhosed. If that's the goal is.
I don't think we can take that position.
I don't think we can.
But you're doing, but you're doing it if you choose, if you decide to do hosted first, but you are.
Yeah, but we're doing.
Agreed, I agree with your statement Kathleen, if you choose. Yeah, so what, what I think we need to do is to, as, put them all in one pot.
Yeah.
And so that they, so that they will be randomly drawn and, uh, from the total number of properly completed and verified applications received. Uh, a max, uh, 51 lottery numbers will be randomly drawn.
Up to 17 hosted and up to 34 unhosed.
Yes.
So then the paragraph at the beginning of this, we need to take out the part that says if the applications exceed the total number allowed, we have to take that out then.
We have to modify that.
Because if we're saying, if, so say, for example, in other scenario, we get 25 unhosed applications. Um, do, you know, do we, they wouldn't, the way this reads now, there would not be a lottery for the unhosed. If there were 25 of them. So then we need to, I mean, I would love to say we don't need a lottery if we have less than the number allowed, but it does complicate things.
Okay, now C, item C gets us the proximity.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, this goes back to the abutment, uh, statement.
Right, and it's, and it's the proximity that we have to worry about.
So even if you had fewer applications than, than the total, which was Fran was just saying, you would still mitigate impact with the next step, which is the linear overlap.
So, so if we go back to the second paragraph, if the total number of applications permits exceeds the total number allowed, then a lottery will be held to determine which permits will be issued. Procedure for the public lottery is as follows. C is after the public lottery, sorry, it is during the public lottery, but it affects both that, the, it, it affects the situation where the number of permits does not exceed the total number allowed. So this, this has to be changed. The second paragraph and C have to be, sorry, the second paragraph and B and C have to be changed.
But you want them, you want both to apply, you want the linear, you want the linear to apply under all scenarios.
Yes, yes, in all circumstances.
This has to be reworded as we did above, and that's easy enough. So the question is in the second paragraph, if the number of applications for hosted or unhosed short-term rental permits, I think this has to come out.
Oh, well, we need to chat, we need to mod, it needs to be modified.
Right, it says.
Well, now, but now Fran, um, the number of applications. Yes, yes, if you take out everything except for the last sentence, I think you're good.
So we want to delete that.
Yeah, I think so.
So we, so we have to have a lottery regardless.
Yes.
Because if we don't, I mean, I'd love to say we don't, but.
Can you explain that?
And it may fluctuate. Say it again, Kathy?
Can you explain that again? If you don't have the number, if you don't, if you, if you have fewer than the maximum allowed and the linear feat apply would be, would be applied to the applications, to the, to the location of the successful applications, why would you have to still do a lottery?
Because if we don't, then the people who, so we get 20 applications for unhosed. Um, those 20 people have priority over the lottery for the hosted.
No. They, they don't have priority.
They will be.
You draw, you draw each time, I draw, I draw application one and it's unhosed, that goes in the unhosed pile. I draw application two and it's hosted, it's hosted. Application three is unhosed and it goes in the unhosed pile until you get to the 34 and 17.
Okay, but you just said, if, if the number of applications does not exceed the number.
That's, sorry, I went in the wrong direction. Yes, I was trying to understand your question about why, your statement about why we would still need to have a lottery if we have fewer than the total applications.
Right, and, and we need to have that to implement the proximity rule, set C.
And to not give priority to either way.
Correct.
I love to say that we should not have to have a lottery if, um.
I guess I'm not understanding why you do, because if you're, if you're applying the linear, this, the 20, whether, whether it's 20 or 50, the, the linear is still gonna space out.
Well, what, what about if we don't have to have a lottery for the unhosed, but we do have to have a lottery for the hosted?
Same rules apply. If, if you have fewer than 34 unhosed and fewer than 17 hosted, that, that still, you might knock one of those out because of the proximity rule.
Right, so the linear kind of trumps, trumps all of it in the end.
Well, but it trumps it as you pick.
As you pick.
Right, you're right, that the result is, it, the proximity is the, is the limiting factor at the end, but it, it applies as you draw.
Right, understood.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're taking out the, if the permits exceed the total number, we have to reword this above.
I should point out, it's 8:27, so we've been almost at this for two hours. And I, I don't know about everybody else, but my energy begins to drop if it hasn't already. Uh, a suggestion, let Fran and I work on rewording this, and we come back to it the next time we look at short-term rentals. Dave, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry that we haven't gotten through it all tonight, that would have been great. But I think we need to consider this a bit more.
Well, it's complicated, it's, it, it takes some consideration.
What I would like to suggest is, um, once Marie and I do this hopefully, uh, early towards the week, we'll notify everyone, and if you could take a look at it and just put your comments right in again, so that we're like that much ahead of it between now and the time we need again.
That would be helpful.
Somebody I know is gonna be in the Grand Canyon, I'm so jealous. Good for you, congratulations.
Wait, is that next? From tomorrow. Whoa. Yeah.
A week from tomorrow, nice.
Fran, if you check the insurance outlet, I was just looking at Nantucket, it's just a quick one. Um, they say that the certificate of insurance evidencing liability insurance coverage for the short-term rental. So I think there might be, just ask if Karen said there's something has to be added to just the general, uh, liability insurance.
I wonder if Massachusetts has a particular liability insurance that relates to short-term rental.
There was a big article in, I think, what was it, the Times this week, Dave? On, on Nantucket, how they're hurting because of all these short-term rentals.
Yeah, I think they're, uh, yeah.
They can't, one of the problems there is they can't get people to work on the island because there's no place for them to live.
Wow, you do not want to end up in that situation.
Yeah, I mean, Nantucket's gorgeous, but, uh, okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, good night all.
Everybody.
Take care, I'll see you whenever, good night.
Good night.